With liberty and justice for all.
Is there a possible motion for an executive session?
I don't see a need for the motion.
Okay, at this point, we'll turn it over to our superintendent for recognition of LHUSD number one, support staff of the year, rookie of the year, site teachers of the year, and LHUSD teacher of the year.
So, Madam President, members of the board, this is always one of the most exciting nights of the school year. So, at LHUSD, we recognize the extraordinary contributions made by teachers and staff every day to improve the lives of students in Lake Havasu City. To honor their work, we invited community members, parents, colleagues, and students to nominate a teacher or staff member who they feel deserves this special recognition. From those nominations, sites selected their teachers of the year. A committee was then assembled to do a blind scoring of the support staff nominees, rookie teacher nominees, and teacher of the year nominees. The tally of those scores brings you this year's honorees. Before we begin, we want to thank our community partners for their generous donations in making this special event a reality. The parent-teacher organizations, the K-12 Foundation generously sponsored tonight's reception. Tonight's awards were generously donated by the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce. The rookie, support staff, and district teacher of the year will receive gift packages generously donated by London Bridge Resort, the K-12 Foundation, Anderson, Arizona Water Sports, Mud Shark Brewery, Sunset Charters, Star Cinemas, Wild Coffee, Surf Through Express Car Wash, the Lake Havasu Chamber of Commerce, our parent organizations, and the Shabby Shack. If we could give them a round of applause, some of them are in our audience.[123.53][123.53][applause] So, we will begin with our support staff of the year. Mrs. Kristin Mortensen.[135.38][135.38][applause] The office assistant of Lake Havasu High School is our 2024 Support Staff of the Year. Mrs. Mortensen is the first face students, staff, families, and the community see when entering LHHS. Mrs. Mortensen goes above and beyond delivering quick service to all with a smile on her face and a can-do attitude. Even though the front office can quickly become hectic, she has also taken on the role of mentoring students who select teacher's assistant as an elective. In this role, Mrs. Mortensen builds positive relationships with students and teaches them basic office skills and time management. Mrs. Mortensen also plays a key role in a meaningful tradition at LHHS where the freshmen write a letter to themselves that they received their senior year. Outside of her contributions to the front office, Mrs. Mortensen has developed a schoolwide copy service that she oversees to help teachers spend less time in the workroom and more time lesson planning and reviewing student work. Lastly, Mrs. Mortensen uses a streamlined approach to the daily substitute check-in procedure that includes a packet with critical information such as emergency plans, primary job duties, key phone numbers, and schedules. Her organization and efficiency in supporting our substitutes is a great example to all. We are grateful for the positive impact Mrs. Mortensen has on so many, and we are proud to name her LHUSD Support Staff of the Year.[227.01][227.01][applause] Next, we will recognize our rookie teacher of the year, Ms. Avalon Verdoni.[242.65][242.65][applause] A Lake Havasu High School alum has returned to her community to teach and is now in her third year of teaching at Ora Grande Classical Academy. Ms. Verdoni's second-grade classroom is founded on the academy's virtues of friendship, wonder, temperance, fortitude, and prudence. Her students are cared for personally as she strives to prioritize their well-being so they are able to take on challenging tasks in reading, writing, math, geography, and science. Outside her daily teaching duties, Ms. Verdoni continues to support her second graders in tutoring club and summer school. She is also the middle school's Spirit Line head coach, where she champions her student athletes by teaching them the value of dedication, hard work, and the value of belonging to a team. In addition to these efforts, Ms. Verdoni has attended the National Symposium for Classical Education and brought back her learning to further the growth of the Classical Academy through language acquisition and Latin training. Outside of her many ventures with the school district, Ms. Verdoni is a member of the Haven Center's Child Abuse Prevention Council, where she has facilitated service learning for Ora Grande's Kindness Club and the student body. We are thrilled to see one of LHUSD's alum back in our classrooms to guide and nurture the next generation of community leaders.[330.13][330.13][applause] Next, we will share a little bit about each school's teacher of the year. Reading interventionist, Mrs. Michelle Boudin.[351.81][351.81][applause] She is Havasu Pai Elementary's Teacher of the Year. This is Mrs. Boudin's 34th year serving the Coyote Pack, where she prides herself in developing not only the minds of her students but also their characters so they are prepared to handle all they may face in their lives. Mrs. Boudin takes extra time to update the monthly bulletin board that displays the character traits students are focusing on. She is also a supporter of the monthly recognition program for students who go above and beyond to display the character trait of the month. Mrs. Boudin's reading intervention room is an organized place where all students receive targeted Tier III instruction tailored to their needs. She and her team work to routinely assess student progress and adapt teaching or adjust groupings to meet the needs of the students. She also leads the student intervention team to ensure that all are on the same page in supporting students who need specialized structures to succeed. Beyond Havasu Pai, Mrs. Boudin is also an active contributor to the district reading intervention team, where her years of experience and wisdom often spread into other classrooms in the district. The Coyote Pack is fortunate to have had the dedication and support of such an excellent educator for so many years. Thank you, Mrs. Boudin, for sharing all your many gifts and talents.[432.84][432.84][applause] Jamaica has chosen Mrs. Kelsey Kendrick.[447.06][447.06][applause] She is a sixth-grade teacher as their teacher of the year. Mrs. Kendrick is known to wear many hats, as she is often the first to step forward with an enthusiastic yes when it comes to extracurricular opportunities for Jamaica's students. She is currently a mentor teacher, math team coach, National Elementary Honor Society advisor, and advisor for Jamaica's New Travel Club. Recently, she has also said yes to the ASU STEM Fellowship and is also pursuing her National Board certification. All of these roles are already remarkable, but her teaching is second to none. She has embraced her STEM training by hosting younger students in her classroom for collaborative, hands-on science lessons that excite learners about the endless possibilities of STEM. Her passion and creativity help her personalize her lessons for her students so she can capture their interests and help them to find those moments where they are able to be the class expert and showcase their learning. Mrs. Kendrick's ability to make learning magic all begins with her innate ability to build relationships that allow her students to feel safe taking risks in their learning, stretching them beyond their comfort zones. Jamaica is grateful for the many opportunities Mrs. Kendrick creates for their campus and cannot wait to see what the future holds for her in education.[534.66][534.66][applause] Lake Havasu High School's Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Julie Zemetal.[545.29][545.29][applause] Mrs. Zemetal's passion for teaching came from a young age, as she is the daughter of two educators. She has carried on her family legacy in LHUSD by teaching elementary, middle, and now high school science during her career. Mrs. Zemetal makes long-lasting connections with her students by taking time to do the little things like birthday celebrations to let them know they matter and are a valuable part of the learning community. Students will tell you she goes above and beyond to make them feel loved and important on a large campus. Mrs. Zemetal has wholeheartedly embraced her role at LHHS and quickly accepted additional leadership roles. She is the current HOSA Club Advisor, where her students excel at state-level competitions and often advance to the international level. Mrs. Zemetal has also been a member of the district calendar committee, science textbook adoption committee, LHHS testing committee, and has also served as the nighttime teacher lead. Not only does she have an impact with her students and several district-level initiatives, but she also freely gives of her time to grow new educators. Mrs. Zemetal is often called up to mentor student teachers and newly hired teachers as they develop their craft. We are so fortunate for her tenacity and commitment to education. Congratulations for making such a positive impact.[631.16][631.16][applause] Mrs. Tamara Cornell is the Nautilus Teacher of the Year.[642.32][642.32][applause] Mrs. Cornell is currently teaching fourth grade. She has a passion for making a difference in her students and seeing them experience those lightbulb moments when mastering a new skill. She believes that if learning is fun and students receive positive and constructive feedback, they can learn anything. Mrs. Cornell models lifelong learning for her students by participating in numerous trainings and book studies. She recently went back to school to earn her master's degree in mathematics education so she could bring a love of math and new teaching strategies to her students. Above all, Mrs. Cornell has a heart for helping all students and prides herself in collaborating with the special education team to support students who need specialized instruction to succeed. She welcomes diverse learners with open arms and often modifies her lessons to suit each individual student. Her heart for others is also seen in the extracurricular activities she supports at Nautilus. Recently, she led the Dude Be Nice Week at Nautilus and is now the Kindness Club Advisor, where she teaches students to model kindness for others and plans fun activities to shower kindness school-wide. Mrs. Cornell is an outstanding role model for the Dolphin family, and we are proud to recognize her as the Nautilus Teacher of the Year.[723.06][723.06][applause] Second-grade teacher, Mrs. Sage Best, is Ora Grande Classical Academy's Teacher of As an LHHS alum and now mom to three LHUSD students, Mrs. Best knows the impact a positive teacher can have on the development of each child. She finds great meaning in her work, knowing that the education of today's youth will have a lasting impact on future generations. Mrs. Best often uses assessment data to differentiate her students and inform small-group teaching. She collaborates with her coworkers to ensure each student receives the right support to excel. This love for supporting all learners has also led her to teach summer school and offer after-school tutoring. When she is not in her classroom, Mrs. Best is often found at community events, supporting her students in their extracurricular activities. Mrs. Best serves as the Ora Grande Classical Academy PTAC liaison and coordinates free events and fundraising activities alongside community and family members. She also volunteers her time in our local theater and has brought a theater club to Ora Grande. Perhaps the thing Mrs. Best is recognized for the most is her warm, welcoming smile. Students and parents alike will tell you she is often the first to greet them in the morning and welcome them with open arms. Thank you, Mrs. Best, for all the ways you train the minds and improve the hearts of Smoke Tree Elementary is recognizing fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Brienne Loetherback.[841.01][841.01][applause] Mrs. Loetherback's teaching philosophy relies heavily on building trust with her students so they feel comfortable attempting new and challenging tasks. As she intentionally helps build her students' confidence level, she capitalizes on their strengths and gently supports their weaknesses to help them become well-rounded individuals. Ms. Loetherback takes pride in designing lessons that are driven by her students' interests and match their unique learning styles. She strives to improve performance in the core subject areas and in their emotional intelligence, knowing that the whole child needs support in both areas. Ms. Loetherback's reach extends beyond the classroom in more ways than one. She has helped Smoke Tree build community partnerships in her roles as the student council and NEHS advisor. She brings a fun, positive energy to those clubs that provide students and staff with a morale boost with her fun events and activities. She also coordinates the summer school and after-school tutoring programs. Lastly, she models lifelong learning and leadership as a mentor teacher and technology super-user. Recently, she also achieved her master's degree in curriculum and instruction. We are incredibly grateful to Ms. Loetherback for being an exceptional role model for the Smoke Tree Cougars. She is a great example of reaching beyond the average and providing service to others.[925.73][925.73][applause] Mrs. Courtney Zampona, first-grade teacher at Starline, has been selected as their teacher of the year.[939.13][939.13][applause] Mrs. Zampona enjoys the uniqueness of each child that she has the pleasure of teaching. She is passionate about finding new ways to design and enhance lessons that capture the attention of her young learners and keep them hungry to learn more. Her classroom is designed as a community where students have a voice and a choice in how they like to learn and can best succeed. Mrs. Zampona works diligently to incorporate activities that allow students of all backgrounds and abilities to access the curriculum in a meaningful way and begin to take ownership of their own growth and success. When Mrs. Zampona is not delighting her students in the classroom, she keeps busy with the several clubs and trainings she is a part of at Starline and across the district. Mrs. Zampona is the student council advisor for Starline and co-advises the Kindness Club and Fitness Stars Club. Many families throughout LHUSD also know Mrs. Zampona for her service to the LHHS Booster Club and for the Camp Invention STEM Experience she offers over the summer. Mrs. Zampona's love for service extends beyond the students as she routinely shares her knowledge and expertise with her fellow staff members. She has been a mentor for novice teachers and facilitates National Board pre-candidacy classes. Starline is thankful to have Mrs. Zampona represent them this year as their site winner.[1020.86][1020.86][applause] So, our final teacher of the year is Allison Finnegan from Thunderbolt. She is sick this evening, but I'm still going to read a little bit about her. We are proud to recognize the eighth-grade math teacher, Mrs. Finnegan, as a site teacher. Mrs. Finnegan's teaching and leadership are characterized by her inclusivity and collaborative spirit. She is known to take a typical math lecture and enhance it with dynamic engagement strategies that allow students to move about the room, work in flexible groups, and even take the role of teacher to teach their peers a concept that they have mastered. Ms. Finnegan's approach to teaching makes the sometimes intimidating subject of algebra accessible and rewarding for all students. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Finnegan is the math department chair for Thunderbolt, where her coworkers will tell you she promotes a culture of productivity, adaptability, and cohesion. She goes out of her way to plan with teachers and other grade levels to ensure all students receive the best instruction. She also spends a great deal of time supporting extracurricular activities for her students. Ms. Finnegan supports her mathletes by running after-school math team practices and joining them at their competitions. She also co-advises student council at National Junior Honor Society and has volunteered numerous times to chaperone the Education Tour Club students on their cross-country trips. Her dedication and service to all facets of the middle school made her a great choice for Thunderbolt's Teacher of the Year.[1109.08][1109.08][applause] While we are incredibly proud of all those who have been recognized tonight, we do select a district teacher of the year to represent us at the state level. This year's winner was selected by a committee of previous winners in a blind screening of candidate qualifications. And this year, our committee has selected Mrs. Courtney Zampona from Starline Elementary School as the 2024 District Teacher of the Year.[1142.13][1142.13][applause] So, as is tradition, along with some other great prizes, Mud Sharks will be naming a pizza in your honor for the upcoming year.[1156.65][1156.65][laughter] So, we are sure families would like to take a moment to take photos, so please feel free to do that at this time.[1167.26][1167.26][applause]
Moving on, we're going to call Carol Noakowski to come forward for the Lake Havasu City Education Association.
Good evening, President Harvey, members of the board, Superintendent Stone, and directors. Before the meeting, I had two items passed out to you. They are bills. One, the SB 1459, was heard today in committee and the House Committee, and it's been heard in the Senate, and so now it's moving on. I know some of this is stuff that we already have to do, but I just wanted to alert you to number five, six, seven, and eight of that, just so you're aware that those things, if passed, will be presented. And five says allows teachers, if the teacher alleges that they were discouraged from submitting a student discipline referral to report the violation to ADE. Number six details how ADE is to adjust the prescribed annual student discipline referral calculation. Seven instructs ADE to reduce a school's letter grade by two letter grades if the school one does not implement disciplinary actions in at least 75% of the total number of student discipline referrals submitted by a teacher in a single school year. And B, has no reasonable justification as determined by ADE for implementing disciplinary action in fewer than 75% of student disciplinary referrals in a single school year. So, that was the conversation in committee, and so I was going to just make sure you guys are all aware of that piece. And then the last one is ADE is to administer an annual survey of school districts and charter school teachers to assess whether, during the previous school year, any school district charter school administrator or teacher considered specified student characteristics when determining whether to submit a student discipline referral or what student disciplinary action was appropriate. So, just giving you a heads-up that that is in the process. And then, as far as SCR 1040, we are still waiting for that to be heard. I haven't seen it on a calendar, so as soon as it is, we'll get more information, and that's the one regarding Prop 123. All right, any questions? All right, thank you.[1353.88][1353.88][applause]
All right, we have no calls to the public, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we accept it.
I'll second.
Sharon Wood?
Yes.
Derek Leno?
Yes.
Lisa Romo?
Yes.
Cal Niederman?
Yes.
And John Masse?
Yes.
All right, there are no discussion items, so we'll move on to the action items. 6.1, Superintendent Recommendation for Principal of Havasu Pai Elementary School.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It is my pleasure to recommend Mrs. Jamie Hammer as the next principal of Havasu Pai Elementary School. She holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in educational leadership. Mrs. Hammer also holds her National Board Teacher Certification in the area of early and middle childhood literacy. She is a board-approved qualified evaluator and has taken the necessary training to effectively evaluate and support staff. During her career in LHUSD, Mrs. Hammer has held a variety of roles to support student achievement and elevate the development of instructional staff. Mrs. Hammer was a third-grade teacher at Jamaica Elementary for many years and served as the summer school coordinator. She has most recently held the positions of Student Success Dean at Starline Elementary and interim principal of Havasu Pai Elementary, where she has developed systems, processes, and procedures to support student interventions for academic and behavioral success. Mrs. Hammer played a key role in supporting the development and implementation of the positive behavior and intervention supports at Jamaica, Starline, and now we look forward to seeing her continue this work with Havasu Pai Elementary. In addition to these roles, Mrs. Hammer was instrumental in leading the transition to the newly adopted Core Knowledge Curriculum as the third-grade articulation lead and site mentor at Jamaica Elementary. She also worked to develop and deliver training on best practices in tiered intervention using the new curriculum and assessment platform. Mrs. Hammer has a passion for supporting diverse learners in overcoming adversities and disabilities. This passion has prepared her well for the principal role. Mrs. Hammer is known to champion all students by embracing each unique set of student needs with great enthusiasm. Mrs. Hammer's commitment to student success is evident by her 22 years of service to public education. Outside of her professional duties, Mrs. Hammer is a devoted wife and mother of two children, one who attends Lake Havasu High School and one studying at Northern Arizona University. Those who know her well will tell you that the students who were once in her classroom still come by to see her often, and she considers them all her kids. Mrs. Hammer's enthusiasm for diverse learners and her systematic approach to building data-driven systems that support student achievement make her a great addition to Havasu Pai Elementary. She has done a wonderful job as the interim principal, and we are delighted to offer her this position should the board approve this evening.
I move that we approve 6.1 as presented.
I'll second, and I was invited to be on the interview panel for Mrs. Hammer, and this was a very easy yes recommendation for me to make. If you don't know the story, I mean, Mrs. Hammer came in to Havasu Pai sort of mid-year, filled in. It would have been very understandable if she had treated that interim position as an interim position, treated it as a short-term, kind of a placeholder type of role, and she did not do that. She showed a lot of leadership. She analyzed some situations that could be improved, and she put in systems to improve what needed to be fixed. She spent that time earning the confidence of her staff, of her students, and of their families. By all counts, she is very visible on the campus. She takes the time to welcome students. She does not sit in her office during the day. She walks the campus, and so just hearing those things made this a very easy recommendation to make.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Derek Cora?
Yes.
Lisa Romo? Yes.
Cal Niederman?
Yes.
John Masse?
Yes.
All right, 6.2, Student Achievement: Textbook Adoption for Foreign Language Materials.
LHUSD is seeking to adopt materials for foreign language courses. The last textbook adoption for Spanish at the high school level was in 2003. The LHUSD Foreign Language Textbook Adoption Committee unanimously recommends McGraw-Hills Aci Cedece for adoption starting in 2425. Lake Havasu Unified School District is committed to providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum, ensuring that all students have access to high-quality materials that support our mission and vision, are aligned to standards, and prepare students for their future. A committee of stakeholders reviewed three options, the final two of which were on display for 60 days in the district boardroom as required by policy and statute. The committee especially considered how the materials provided instructional support to teachers. McGraw-Hills Aci Cedece stood out in terms of usability for teachers and students, student engagement, inclusion of research-based instructional practices, and open parent communication. The cost to purchase seven years of student and teacher materials, digital licenses, and professional development is not to exceed $90,000, including shipping and handling. By purchasing over the course of seven years, we received $15,000 in free materials and professional development. In addition, the committee reviewed resources for American Sign Language, which the board had previously approved. The committee unanimously recommends ASL Defined as the resource for the ASL teacher to use as the basis for the ASL Scope and Sequence. ASL Defined costs $12 per student per year for the 2425 school year. The item has been approved by the business, reviewed by the business department. The purchases will be made with capital and/or other funds approved for capital expenses. The quotes are attached, and a presentation is now. So, going through the curriculum adoption, many of you on the board have been through the adoption process. Arizona Revised Statutes requires a committee to develop, that is developed to vet the textbooks. Public meetings are held. Textbooks are on display for 60 days, and then the recommendation is made to the board. And then the next step is implementing, which is purchasing the materials, developing curriculum maps, assessments, and materials, providing professional development to teachers, and then refining maps as we implement. Again, the importance of Arizona Revised Statutes in guiding this work. 15721, Part A, the governing board shall approve- the general subject title prior to implementation of the course. If any course does not include a basic textbook, the governing board will approve all supplemental books used in the course prior to approval of the course. And so we'll talk about a more supplementary material with ASL and then the course curriculum. Again, the board is required that all meetings of textbook adoption committees are open to the public, and the books are on display for 60 days prior to approval. It's further laid out in board policy. It defines what a textbook is, and then states in our board policy that public school students should be taught to treat and value each other as individuals and not taught to resent or hate other races or classes of people. The district shall not include in its program of instruction any courses or classes that include any of the following: promotion of the overthrow of the U.S. government, promotion of resentment towards a race or class of people, or designed primarily for students of a particular ethnic group, advocate ethnic solidarity instead of the treatment of students as individuals. The above shall not be construed to restrict or prohibit courses for Native American students to comply with federal law, the grouping of students according to academic performance, including capability in the English language, courses that include the history of any ethnic group, which are open to all students, courses that include the discussion of controversial aspects of history, instruction on the Holocaust, or any other instance of genocide. So now thinking specifically about the Spanish textbook adoption, communication that went out. We displayed our possible textbook adoption choices on our website with a QR code for feedback options. Nobody accessed the QR code to give us any feedback through that method. We also emailed stakeholders from the committee throughout and collected their questions that they wanted to see from the textbook providers. And some of the things that they asked about was support for teachers, students, and families, what data would be provided through the curriculum, and then how, what support there would be for teacher lesson planning. We had two stakeholder, two stakeholder meetings, which were open to the public. Nobody from the public outside of the committee attended. We've shared in the newspaper, through school board meetings, social media, community groups that we were considering the adoption of a new curriculum. Two visitors physically came in and signed in to review the curriculum, although we didn't get any feedback digitally from, from those members. Here's the makeup of the stakeholder group. The, the group represented teachers, coaches, administrators at the site and district level, students, parents, the superintendent, and a board member. So we are looking to adopt textbooks or curricular materials for Spanish 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and American Sign Language. Thinking about who are our students, that is, again, the key group that we're adopting materials for. And so we can see that primarily students are freshmen and sophomores that are taking Spanish. However, we also do have some juniors and seniors. Many students who are taking a foreign language are interested in doing so as it is a requirement for some four-year universities. And so thinking about what that post-secondary plan is, it's imperative that we do offer some sort of foreign language. Thinking about as we adopt curriculum, our goal is always a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And what that means is that we want to make sure that students are taught specific content in specific courses and specific grade levels. We know that that has the highest relation to student achievement, that we know Lake Havasu High School students, when they graduate, know and are able to do what, what y'all, and we define that, what that is. And so if it's guaranteed, we know that that specific course has specific content that is taught and that it's viable. It means that there's enough time to teach that, and the students learn that. The purpose of world language courses is to, in establishing a citizenry skilled in world languages and familiar with other cultures, is essential to the success of the nation. The United States is intricably linked to the economic, social, political, and cultural realities around the world. Sorry, the word, word is inextricably. My mouth isn't working. And thinking about a world, learning another language, it's a requisite skill for citizens in dealing in the economy. So the current textbook that we have is from 2003, Holt's Spanish. The committee has chosen unanimously McGraw-Hill Ossis Sedisse. And so thinking about some of the reasons why, sorry, that was a quick slide. Some of the reasons that the committee said that they chose that was because of the organization for both teachers and students. More resources, easy to manage, shorter chapters, easier transition from the current, it, it fits with our current pacing. There's a calendar on the dashboard that shows when things are due, what assignments are coming up. There's interactive pieces, things like digital flashcards, videos that students can interact with. The video says something, the student repeats it and records itself. There is an app that students can use, even that, that they can use whether they're in or out of the class. It represents cultures relating to the Spanish language evenly. So it talks about students that speak Spanish in different locations around the world. Scaffolding, again, students are able to record and turn in their answers. So thinking about the importance of verbal communication, videos on demand, it integrates well with Google Classroom. And then like all of our latest textbook adoptions really focused on parent support. So parents can log right in and see what their students are doing. The next slide is just McGraw-Hill's top 10 reasons. There are many of our reasons. So looking at the cost, the overall cost over seven years is $81,895. It breaks out to $11,699 per year, or $20.89 per student per year. And there's approximately $17,000 of free material. Thinking, we will be getting digital licenses, class set of books, teacher professional development, and teacher materials. So that is on the Spanish side what the committee is unanimously recommending for adoption. On the American Sign Language side, they're recommending this resource. It is an online resource that will support the teacher in developing a course sequence and building a curriculum. It has 24/7 accessibility, themed lessons, video technology, retention exercises and activities, an individualized progress, progress chart, 17,000 videos for the dictionary, student app available, and it is $8.40, or sorry, $840 per year for licensing. So our next step, should the board choose to approve the adoption of the materials, is to select the units of instruction within the text materials, develop a scope and sequence and pacing guide, differentiate honors coursework, create the professional development for teachers, and then supporting and evaluating the implementation product, process. We know that adoption is just the first step. The reality of what makes a guaranteed and viable curriculum is that we go back, we revisit, we look at how it's working, we provide support to teachers, we look at data from students, and keep going back to that throughout the adoption. That is it for the presentation.
So any discussion or emotion?
I move we approve it as presented.
I'd like to give a little discussion, and I will second. I really do appreciate the process that you have lined out and shared with the public here. I do appreciate that we have many entry points for the public to give their opinion on it. And it's great that we're moving into the 21st century. You know, 2003, just a textbook, you know, kids with a textbook, you know, it's, it's a doorweight. But with all the materials they have and, and all of the things that the teachers can use, this is a, a great direction and move.
And I was able to serve on this textbook recommendation committee as well, so I got to spend some time with the Spanish department. I also liked the pacing, and I felt like our, our teachers that we currently have are seasoned at their jobs, and, and they know what they're doing. But the pacing identified required learning elements, recommended learning elements, and then optional activities. And I felt like that would be really helpful for a teacher who's just coming on board to be able to identify the essential components of each lesson, and also leave room for some of the more like fun, enriching types of activities if you end up with more days at the end of your unit. So I like that part of it. I like the fact that it really emphasizes grammar. Anyone who's taken a foreign language knows that you often learn a lot about your own language by taking that foreign language, because you cannot rely on what just sounds right to speak. You have to be able to identify parts of speech and really think about the syntax. And so I really like the grammar component. I felt like Ossis Sedisse really, that was one of their strong points. The digital interface was good. I like the parent involvement. And it also included a placement exam, which I thought would be helpful. Sometimes we get students who come in mid-year, and identifying which class would be best for them. It seems like a placement test would, would help with that. So this, this definitely got a yes for me.
Yes.
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 All right. 6.3 Business Services: Fiscal Year 2025 Medical Benefit Premiums and 2024 One-Time Cost of Living Adjustment. COLA. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. On February 9th, 2024, the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust held their annual benefit renewal meeting and approved medical-related benefits and entity premiums for the 2025 fiscal year. Changes to benefits and benefit premiums for fiscal year 2025 are outlined in the attached document. Savings recognized from the NAEBT Instructional Improvement Fund and Energy Savings will provide for a one-time 3% COLA for all LHUSD staff to be paid out on May 3rd, 2024. So this is a two-slide presentation. This is a summary of the benefit changes for, for fiscal year 2025 from the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust. And then the following slide will be the outline of what those premiums look like for district contributions and employee contributions. So going back to that first slide, the outline for our EPO plan, which is a standard deductible copay type of a plan. And then the HSP is your traditional health, or high-deductible health plan, or in which we call it the Health Savings Plan as well within the NAEBT. So if you look at the first two columns, they're very similar. We are adding, the Northwest Arizona Employee Benefit Trust is adding hearing aid coverage. You can see there 80% after-deductible with a maximum of $3,000 every three years. That's for both plans. Both plans will also add coverage for cochlear implants under the prosthetics section of our, our benefits. Both plans will off, also add SORD, which, SORD in Digital PT and Bloom's Women's Health, as well as adding Wonder Weight Management Programs under both the EPO and the HSP plan. So we have a combination of benefit enhancements medically, and then we also have a combination of benefit enhancements when we're talking about wellness, which hopefully will improve overall health as we utilize those wellness benefits. In the HSP plan, the federal requirements were to increase the deductible in the high-deductible health plan from $1,500 for an individual. That'll increase to $1,600 for an individual. And then the $3,000 family, or more than just the individual, so if you have a spouse or child or family, that, that deductible will increase from $3,000 to $3,200. And then over on the life side, the third column, the life benefits also have been enhanced. So the trust has eliminated the age reduction at 70 years of age. There are, there's a trigger there, a, a set rate when, when you hit the age of 70, there is a reduction typically in your life benefit. The trust has eliminated that. So when you do hit the age of 70, that reduction in your life benefit will not, you, you won't see that reduction. So it'll, it'll maintain and be the same as if you were 25. Also, we're increasing, the trust is increasing basic child life to $10,000, and then increasing basic spouse life to $20,000. Previously, it was $5,000 for children and $10,000 for spouse. So they doubled the coverage there in fiscal year 2025. So that will start July 1st of this year. And then the next slide, again, this is probably too small to read, but it is included in the board docs there for the public and anyone else to, to look at. It will also be made available for staff at, in the near future. These are calculated as monthly rates, so I want to highlight down at the bottom of this page, just a note that the deductions per pay period will vary by your position and the individual pay division election. So if you elect based on your position, if you are a year-round employee who is paid 26 pays, based on the election of how often you get paid, the premium amount per, per paycheck, so bi-weekly, will fluctuate. So it may not be, these again are calculated at a monthly rate, but they will change depending on the election that you have as to how often you're paid. And HR will help and assist with that as, as questions arise, but they are extremely proactive in getting that information out to, to you as you make your pay election.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move we accept it as presented.
Just with some quick discussion, what's the increase in the amount that employees would have to pay as a percent?
So for this coming 2025, there will actually be a reduction in what they will pay.
That is awesome, and I will second.
Yes.
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 All right. 6.4 Business Services: Acceptance of Annual Comprehensive Financial Report (ACFR), Single Audit and USFR Questionnaire for Fiscal Year 2023.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. ARS 15-914 requires that school districts who have an adopted MNO budget limit in excess of $2 million annually shall contract for an annual financial statement audit and the completion of the USFR compliance questionnaire. School districts who expend more than $750,000 in federal revenues must also contract for a federal single audit. In the spring of 2021, the Arizona Legislature passed legislation that requires the governing board to publicly accept these audits through a roll-call vote. The school district must also upload these files to the Arizona Department of Education and provide them to the county superintendent's office. On November 1st, 2023, the auditors presented information pertaining to the progress and wrap-up of the fiscal year '23 audit in a governing board work session, and the final audit documents have now been received, and those documents are those attachments in the presentation, or in the action item.
Was there any change in the documents that were significant since our, our last meeting?
There were no changes significant. There were actually the USFR questionnaire. They always tell you in that work session that if we can find the supporting documents that they're looking for, they take those findings away. And we did have, we did- that they're looking for, they take those findings away, and we did have, we did have a reduction of some of those findings, but they're all minor in nature as they were presented in November to you from the auditors.
Thank you.
I move to approve six point four.
Second.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
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 Six point five Business Services Vouchers, Student Activity Funds, and Auxiliary Funds.
Thank you, Madam President, board members. The auxiliary funds, vouchers, and student activity funds for February 2024 are within this action item for you tonight.
I move that we accept six point five as presented.
I'll second that.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
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 Does Dr. Stone have anything to inform us?
I just wanted to once again thank all of our teachers, Rookie of the Year, Support Staff of the Year. They really do an amazing job for all of our students, and also wish everyone a wonderful spring break, which I know they are excited to start on Friday.
How about the governing board members? Any information?
I just wanted to give a big shout-out. At ASC, we held the, the math challenge for middle school students. There were 152 middle school students from the entire Mojave Region and Parker. We had schools that were charter, private, from Mojave Valley, Kingman, Bullhead, Parker, and Thunderbolt cleaned their clock. There were 24 students who were, went with, with Thunderbolt. They placed first in both seventh and eighth, and we give individual awards, and in seventh grade, five out of the six top kids were Thunderbolt kids. It's great that we have the teachers here tonight, because a lot of those teachers there, even though it's Thunderbolt, were laying the foundation. So you heard a lot of them talk about their math background. We are in a great direction. We do very well with our STEM courses for this region.
Do we have any board suggestions for future agenda items? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Do I have one?
I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
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 The meeting is adjourned.